Battle Creek, and this is a workshop on behalf of our purchasing department and our city manager. And to participate in this meeting, you may call in on Zoom. The meeting at the following telephone number is 312-626-6799. The caller will be prompted to enter a meeting ID number, which is 998-944-12167. I'll repeat the meeting ID number again is 944-1216, excuse me, 998-944-12167. Let's see, we're going to start the meeting. I want to thank everyone for attending. Looks like we have the complete commission here. We're going to open the floor to public comment, and I will turn it over to Sarah, who will screen those people for public comment. I guess that's the best way of saying it. Sarah, go ahead.
Sounds good. Caller with the last four digits of 3076, if you'd like to identify yourself and make public comment.
And just so you know, you do not have to give public comment, but we want to give you an opportunity. So the last three digits, 3076, or last four digits, do you want to make any public comments? Let's go to the next person, Sarah.
Okay, Tracy from Republic Services, would you like to make any public comment? You can press star six to unmute yourself if you guys are on the phone and would like to make public comments. So Tracy, if you'd like to, you can go ahead.
Okay, Sarah, let's go to the next person.
Mike, Tracy, I'm sorry, would you like to go ahead?
No comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike from a public service, if you'd like to press star six to unmute yourself and make public comment.
Okay, Sarah, let's go to the next person.
Jack from Republic Services, if you'd like to press star six and unmute yourself.
No public comment, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Sarah, is there anyone else in the queue?
Yes, and a caller with the last four digits of 6289, if you would like to press star six to unmute yourself and make public comment.
Yes, this is Kyle Lor from Republic Services. I don't have any public comments either.
You're a good man, Kyle. Sarah, is there anyone else in the queue?
There is nobody else, Mayor. We're all set, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. It's my honor to turn the meeting over to our city manager, Rebecca Fleury. And Rebecca, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate that. I do think that we do not have the entire commission here yet, and I do know that Commissioner Herring may not be able to join us this evening, just to let you know, Mayor. But thank you very much for this time, Mayor and Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate you being here tonight to talk about a topic that I will tell you is a very hot topic most weeks in the city of Battle Creek, and that's residential waste. We're at a very interesting time right now in our, you know, in our contract with a waste hauler, and that's what we're going to talk with you tonight about. I'm going to, Sarah, if you could advance the slide, please. This is, this is kind of the order of what we're going to be discussing tonight. I'm going to take a minute to talk to you a little bit about our city ordinance. We're going to talk about the waste hauling contractual agreement and a little bit of overview there. And then staff's going to talk about solid waste services, recycling issues, our procurement history and contract details, a transition team in place, residential waste fee discussions, and then I'll open it up for questions from the commission. However, if as we go along, you have questions, please feel free to stop us, and we'll do our best to answer when, because the screen is being shared with the presentation, not the speakers can't see everybody, so if you want to just say something, or if Sarah, you see a hand up that I don't see, or Vicky, please just let me know, okay? Thanks, go ahead. Next slide, please, Sarah. Okay, so currently, the city of Battle Creek does have in our city ordinance is chapter 1064. This chapter regulates garbage and rubbish collection as well as disposal. The mandatory refuse collection was approved by voters November 6, 1984, really to address health and safety issues as well as blight from illegal dumping. This ordinance regulates both city residents as well as the city contractor for the service. It does require that all city residents must exclusively use the city contractor for residential refuse removal. You know, this decision was made because it really did help decrease the number of garbage trucks that were coming in and out of neighborhoods and on city streets to help prolong the life of the infrastructure. You know, we have over 300 miles of roads, and we want to try to keep that in our, in best shape. And I think decreasing the number of trucks, particularly around residential refuse, is a help in that area. It also, the ordinance also regulates the time of day in which residential refuse can be collected. I know that that can be a very important issue, particularly in our residential neighborhoods. And so it doesn't allow for any, you know, very, very early collection of residential waste, and that's one of the things that's identified in the ordinance as an important distinction from residents. There are also various provisions regarding billing and provisions providing the charges for residential refuse collection. And it constitutes a lien on a property to provide protection to cities contractor for payment, since we know that it is a health and safety factor that residential waste cannot and should not accumulate in the city due to non-payment. The ordinance also requires that commercial properties may only use the service of waste haulers who are licensed to do business in the city. I think it's important that I share with commission and with anybody watching this workshop tonight is that the city's ordinance regulates residential garbage and rubbish collection, but does have a provision in regards to commercial rubbish collection, and that they must be licensed to do so. However, commercial properties do not have to use the single waste hauler, and it's not provided for under the contract with the city. Next slide, please, Sarah. In our contractual agreement, we enter into a contractual agreement with a qualified waste hauler, and that contractor is selected periodically through a formal and competitive process. And Chris Huff, our purchasing manager, is going to go through that a little bit later on. The contract is only between the city of Battle Creek, only had, the contract only has, excuse me, the city of Battle Creek and the contractor as parties to the contract. Since residents are not party to the waste hauling contract, there must be a separate governing document, which is our ordinance. So I hope that you see that our ordinance and our contract really work hand in hand to outline the provisions of residential waste hauling. The contractor must comply then with all of the terms in the ordinance, and that is certainly made clear in the bid process and throughout the length and term of the contract. It is important to note, certainly, that part of the sustainability plan of the city of Battle Creek is to make sure that we're always compliant with environmental laws, and certainly those laws have changed. So if there is a moment where environmental laws have changed during the term of the contract, the city can make those ordinance changes that may be required by state law. If the contract requires a price change as a result of change in the law, then that would come to the commission for approval. So really, what I hope to explain is that how the contractual agreement and the ordinance do work hand in hand, and the contractor must adhere to all of the provisions of the ordinance. I'm certainly not going to go through every, every provision of chapter 1064. You're more than welcome to do that, but we've just simply highlighted some of the, some of the requirements and specifications that we most deal with as a staff and as people call in inquiring about the service.
Rebecca?
Yes?
Can I ask a quick question on, at this time, or do you prefer I wait till the end?
Nope, you, go ahead.
Okay, Sarah, can you go back one slide? Really quick, just so I have a better understanding, and maybe so this doesn't sound scary to anyone who's listening. If we drop down to, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the seventh bullet point, where it talks about various provisions regarding billing and provides that charges for residential, whoops, refuges, collection constitutes a lien on the property. So with the city and the contractor being the only two on the contract, how are, how would a lien on the property take place with the ordinance in regards to billing? Because I know we pay for refuges through our water. So how, what would that look like, and what would that process look like? And how often does this or something like this occur?
It's a really good question. I don't have any data about how often it occurs. And similar to rolling of a tax, an unpaid tax lien, it's somewhat of a similar process. So you're right, there are several components on a utility bill, of which the residential waste hauling is one of them. So that would be, you know, certainly, there's many discussions that would happen before that would occur through utility billing and reach out of customers and/or property owners if it is a rental property. But then, you know, the amount of delinquency would be leaned according to the provisions of the ordinance, and I won't go through all of that. But again, I just want to say that there would be many things that would be in place before that would happen, and then we would make sure that we are working directly either with the property owner or the tenant to do everything we could to not have that happen. But we just, you know, we say that only because, as you say, this is a very unique contract, and because the ordinance and the contract are so closely tied. You know, I'm sure that anybody that's looking to bid on this particular contract with the city would want to make sure there were some assurances in place for that.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you explaining that, and hopefully that will help anybody who's listening understand that there are steps that go into that. It's not just an immediate lien, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Any other questions before I am going to turn it over to Patty Hochmellwich, who's going to talk about the services that we have in place right now? Patty?
Thank you. I'm the environmental and storm service manager with the city, and what falls under our, the environmental division is the solid waste services. So you live in the city, so you're probably aware of this, but I'm just going to walk through what's offered with the solid waste service contract. Garbage, weekly unlimited curbside residential garbage collection. Weekly unlimited curbside bulk collection. Recycling, which is a single stream recycling, is offered every other week. Curbside yard waste, weekly unlimited from the first full week of April 7th to the last day of December 7th. It's extended this year to December 11th. But that's weekly unlimited. There are also two special pickups, a spring and a fall, where up to 10 cubic yards of construction waste, and that includes waste from construction, repairs, demolition, alteration within your residency. Live Christmas tree pickup from December 26th to January 29th. And then the city's compost site, Bryce Pitt, is also available to residents for organic drop off of like yard waste, grass clippings, limbs, branches, that sort of thing. So if I could have the next slide, please. Thank you. So service occurs, as Rebecca said, certain periods of the day. It's between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday. That we have had some instances this year with yard waste being collected on Saturday to try and catch up, but typically it's Monday through Friday. Garbage and yard waste containers can be rented from the hauler, or you can use a personal container. And there are certain specifications for that personal container. The current contract has recycling carts provided to all the single-family residences. So you can see in that top picture there, there's the green cart with the yellow lid. That's a 96 gallon recycling cart for single stream recycling. There is no commercial construction waste or hazardous waste collected at any time. The construction waste is just from your own residence on the special spring and fall collection. Receptacles have to be 50 pounds or less for the hauler to be able to handle them. Yard waste must be bagged or bundled in a particular way. So you see on the bottom, the biodegradable yard waste bags are accepted, and then twigs and sticks and that sort of thing have to be bundled to less than four feet in length and less than two inches diameter for each individual branch or limb. Mattresses, which are collected for the, during the bulk waste collection, are, need to be bagged. And we're in discussion right now about how we're going to handle, how the, the bags will be handled as far as cost and delivery mechanism, whether it will be provided by the city or whether the individual will need to get their own mattress bag or cover. We're still in the work talking about that right now. So, next slide, please. So a big part of what I'm going to talk about tonight is the city's recycling program, and particularly the current state of the contamination with the recycling program. Just to walk you through really quickly, in early March, the city was informed by our current hauler that they were seeing a lot of contamination in certain routes, collection routes for recycling. It was the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday routes. And what was happening was it was getting to the, what's called the MRF, the Materials Recovery Facility in Holland, which collects, which is where the Battle Creek recycling ends up. And it was so contaminated, it was getting rejected and ultimately sent to the landfill. And in addition to that, the program was getting a $1,600 fee for rejection fee at the Materials Recovery Facility. And this, this photo on the top is one that I actually took of some of the, the contamination that we're seeing in the Battle Creek recycling. There's a garbage or a vacuum cleaner, lots of garbage cans, there's fabric, furnace filter. So, so it's, it can be quite contaminated. And in some of those, the affected areas, there's a higher percentage of some rental properties perhaps, and that has a challenge because the education and outreach becomes a little bit more difficult. You, you get someone onboard recycling, and then they leave, and the cart's still there, and a new person moves in, and they're not quite sure of the recycling protocol. So, so it creates a bit of a challenge. So what we had planned to do when we heard about this in March was to initiate a pretty aggressive education campaign, including cart audits. And what a cart audit is, is when you physically open the lid of the recycling cart and see what's in there, and you can see if there's contamination in there. Neighborhood outreach meetings, direct customer interaction. And then COVID happened, and, and I'm not saying that this would have been an easy task even without COVID, but when you add COVID into that, it really limited our, our opportunities for outreach meetings, that sort of thing. And then we also found that the city ordinance, the way it's currently written, doesn't allow for cart audits by city staff or volunteers. It's written that only the waste hauler in the resident can actually have, open the lid of the garbage and recycling can. So we were really quite limited on our education and outreach and how we could address this recycling contamination. But there is a concern over the credibility of our recycling program and how we can sustain it, and also the financial burden of paying for recycling that we're not actually getting in addition to the, the fees for contaminated loads on top of that. So go to the next slide, please. So I just wanted to tell you about some of the outreach efforts that we've had this summer. Given what we could do, we have had a lot of cooperation from Jessica's communications manager's been doing a great job with helping us get information out on the city website, Facebook page, next door. So she's been helping where she can. We've had some community meetings. We were able to do a few before COVID. My coworker, Bessie Steers, and I got, I got out to a few. We've had shopper articles out, that's ongoing. We've had a few Battle Creek Inquirer articles somewhere on the front page. We've had keeping you informed on access vision and some public service announcements. Been on the radio a couple times. We've had an ad on the radio talking about no plastic bags and proper recycling. We had a Bill Stuffer that went out in August. Bessie and I went to the farmer's market several times this summer. That was a really great venue to reach people. We have Facebook, the Battle Creek Area Clean Water Partners Facebook page. We have a display at Lakeview Square Mall right now with recycling education. We've had some billboards going. We have one going right now on the, it's actually the Beckley Road electronic billboard. We've had some recycling education on there. And then we sent out postcards, which you can see, one is on the bottom here, to the affected neighborhoods where we're really trying to focus our outreach. We've had two direct mailers go out. And then we're currently working on a tagging program, which is the, the cart audit that I talked about. And while I had mentioned the city and volunteers cannot do it, so we've had to rely on our waste hauler to do, use their staff to help us. They agreed to help with a very small scale tagging program. So they identified one area of the city, one collection day, and a focused area where we could just, wanted to do something rather than nothing. So it's very small scale, but we're, they're actually helping us by tagging some contaminated carts, and we're going with a three, three times contaminated, the cart will be removed. So very small scale, but at least we're, we're starting, starting a tagging program. And then also, right now, as we speak, our first Department of Public Works newsletters in print, hoping to go out in the next week or so. And it's very heavily focused on recycling and solid waste, this first issue. So that will be going out to all the residents in the next week or so. So I wanted to, I'll hurry here. One of the options that we're looking at to improve recycling is Battle, in Battle Creek, is the opt-in program. And what that would be is somewhat, the resident would call, email, do an online form, somehow let us know that they want to recycle. And so in that way, we're getting people, part of the recycling program that really want to recycle and are committed to doing it right. Carl's going to talk a little bit more about the fee structure for that and how that would work if we have a different fluctuating levels of participation. But right now, what we really want to bring home is that this is really, with the, the change in the contract, it's the ideal time to go to an opt-in program. Because it, all the carts, right now, everyone in, that has a solid waste service in the city has a recycling cart. And it, we want to think that everyone wants to recycle, but the reality is that not everyone is going to want to recycle or recycle correctly. And so this would allow us to start out with getting those that want to recycle, getting them a cart, and then we can build from there with outreach and education and get more and more carts out into the system. And right now, we have some, some residents that want to recycle and have a cart, but their recycling is not getting to the recycling facility. So I've had several calls of people that are driving the recycling somewhere else, so they're sure it's getting recycled, or they're, they're just keeping it until they know that our program is back on track again. So this would really help make a more credible recycling program for the city, and also more cost effective that we're not getting those rejection fines, and we're not paying for a service that we're really not providing to many of the routes on the, on the collection routes right now. So I just want to, you know, once those recycling carts are out there, it's delivered to all residents. It's very costly and also logistically difficult to get them back again. So again, right now, we're going to be starting fresh with a new contract, and to go with this opt-in program, it could be really a great opportunity for the city to get back on track with recycling. We've spoken to a few local municipalities that are using an opt-in program. Muskegon has a successful recycling program where they have a call or an online form to get the cart, and they have very minimal contamination in their recycling. And I've talked a lot to Kalamazoo, and they have a similar call, email, or online form, and also really high-quality recycling. I didn't talk to Detroit, but I saw online, they have three options to get a recycling cart. You can just pay upfront and get a cart. You can take a class to get a free cart, or you can do an online tutorial to get a free cart. And again, it's just that one little step, little effort to show that you want to recycle, and we feel like that could be really a good, good way for the city to go. I have one more slide, just some other options. Again, we talked about the ordinance change, and that's in the works right now that will allow us in the future to do those cart audits. It could be city staff, our authorized agents from the city to get, to identify contamination before it gets into the truck. And then we would also look into removing carts from repeat contamination offenders. Another option would be to require a cart for trash and yard waste, a specified cart. This would minimize the use of that recycling cart as an extra garbage container, which is what we're seeing in some instances right now. We've talked about in the past a recycling rewards program, and I think Kristin talked about that in the city of Grand Rapids. So that's an option down the road. And then also, some cities out in California, San Francisco, for instance, has a pay-as-you-throw program that incentivizes recycling over garbage. So you get charged more for your waste versus recycling. So we're, we're just looking at all kinds of options, but the opt-in program right now really seems like a really great way to go for, for the city's recycling. So that's all I have right now, and thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? So Patty, and correct me if I'm wrong. So currently, our recycling is only available to single-family households, not multifamily, two-family. Was that correct?
I think, I, I can't say for sure, but I think duplexes maybe. I'm not sure what the, what the, what the criteria is for the city's solid waste, but I think maybe duplexes, but not like apartment complexes, don't have it right now.
Okay.
Through this program.
Through this program. And in the opt-in program, those types of units would still not be able to opt in because of the unique situation of how they're necessarily set up. They would still have to drive their recycling to a location, is that correct?
That's correct, as, as it stands right now, yes.
Okay, out of curiosity, was it ever, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this question, but was it ever considered putting a large recycling bin at apartments or at locations with multiple homes? So people in those homes and those residents could participate in recycling programs?
We have not talked about that at this point. We've just been, you know, talking about this particular contract and how to improve this program right now, but certainly open for suggestions down the road.
Awesome. Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Chris Huff, are you next, Chris?
Yes.
All right.
Commissioner Reynolds has a question.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Commissioner Reynolds, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Do we have an overall analysis as the savings opposed to the waste management going to the Republic?
We are going to talk about that. If you hold on to that, I think that's going to be answered as we move through the presentation, but it's an excellent question.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Sophia?
Thank you. So Patty, to follow up on Commissioner Blood's comments, I think most apartments use like a big, they're, they're not using the, the traditional garbage cans as we know them, that you would have in a single-family home. So, you know, they could, they could have any waste, their owner could contract with whomever they choose to provide waste services there. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. My, yes, I believe so, yes.
So, so then having a recycling program run by one waste hauler that the city contracts with at a complex where they're not necessarily even paying for waste, for, for garbage service, would be somewhat tricky. Is that an accurate assessment?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I.
Commissioner Sophia, if I could add to that, really, yeah, it's a good point of clarification that this is just for residential waste, because when you get to a certain number of units, it becomes commercial. And so it wouldn't be subject to our residential waste contract. So, and I, I don't have that number, but it certainly is defined in our ordinance.
Thank you. Any more questions? Are we ready to go?
Yes, thank you, Chris. I think we're good.
Okay, okay, good. I'm Chris Huff, purchasing manager for the city of Battle Creek. Waste management has had this contract since we started the mandatory refus in 1984. This is about my fifth round of bidding for this contract, which expires March 31st, 2021. And in the past, we've done an invitation for bid, and what that means is we take the ordinance, we take the qualifications, and then the bidders give a price, and we go with low bid, provided they were responsive and responsible. The, the two bidders we've had in the last 20 years that I've been here have been Republican Waste Management every time, and we haven't had any others besides that. So this time, though, we decided to do a request for proposals, which means we wanted to get some feedback from the contractors. We wanted to consider price and other factors as well. We wanted to get input on maybe efficiencies with the recycling, or with, you know, issues with the ordinance as it is, with the unlimited trash, you know, not to go with that. And I'll talk a little bit how we broke that out in the next slide. So we issued the request for proposals on the first, and they were due on the 22nd. You can go ahead, Sarah. We broke the RFP out into two parts, because we can't do anything outside of the ordinance, as Rebecca was talking about, they're too tied together. So we did it in two parts. Tier one is the ordinance as it's written. Basically, it's the bid that we generally. Basically, it's the bid that we generally do, where they give a price, and they say they'll comply with all of the ordinance. Tier two was looking for some of their ideas for unlimited trash, bulk pickup, that sort of thing. And, oh, and I'm sorry, those changes would require working with the commission, because any change to the contract would require a change to the ordinance, which requires working with the commission. Okay, Sarah. Want to let you know some of the key contract provisions in every waste man, or every residential waste contract that we have. And one is the performance bond, and that's really important. If the company, for some reason, goes out of business, we can call in that bond and get several million dollars to hurry up and contract with somebody else so that we can continue operating. And it's a really important protection. We haven't had to call in anybody's bond yet, but it's, it's an important protection, along with the liability insurance. We have cancellation clauses in our contract to allow cancellation for convenience. So for instance, if the voters decided they didn't want to do mandatory refus anymore, and we didn't need a contract, we could give a 90-day notice and then cancel that. Or we have cancellation for cause. If we work with the vendor and they are still a problem, we could cancel the contract for cause. We have a special petition for price increase in case a law changes that requires a price increase on the part of the vendor, and that would also require commission approval. An, an instance of that that we had recently, a couple of years ago, when China was not taking recycle anymore from any country in the world, countries were left scrambling with recycle because it was so contaminated. I think they had 33% contamination. Patty could correct me if I'm wrong. But what that made us do is we worked with Waste Management to go to the every-other-week recycling, and we took that amendment to the commission with the proviso that we would bid out for this again in 2020. Because we actually had two more years left on the contract, but we, we took all these changes to the commission as we were required to do. And of course, they have to comply with federal, state, and local laws. The way we have the contract structured right now will be for five years firm, and that's really important, because as it turns out, with Republic happening to get this contract, they have a capital outlay, and that allows it to spread that out over five years. So you can see what the terms will look like. Those optional renewals, we don't have pricing yet for those, but Republic has a consistent 4% renewal with, or 4% increase along those five years. And so what happens is that when that renewal comes up, even though the city manager will have the authority to sign that, we look at that about eight months ahead of time. And as long as that renewal is within that 4% range, we'll just go ahead, provided there are no other issues, and the city manager can sign those renewals as well. If the price is just, you know, way out there for that renewal, we'll rebid it. And that's why we approached that eight months ahead of time, so that we can rebid this, because this is a, probably our biggest contract. It has the most direct and immediate influence on every resident in the city. And it's, it's really important, okay? This is your selection committee. Purchasing oversees the process, so I'm an impartial director of how we bid it, advertising, talking with the bidders, dealing with the contracts. And this is your selection committee that actually makes the decision and the recommendation to the commission. They had their first meeting on October 6th. What they had to do is independently read every proposal and tentatively score it. And then they get together, and they talk about both the proposals, and you can see the areas that we evaluated them on, firm qualifications, personnel, work plan, and price. And then they come up with the consensus score. And on the next slide, I'll show you how we determined price. It's a ratio, it's a formula that we use to get, I didn't put that formula. I'm sorry, I can give that to you if you want it, but it's pretty standard. So the lowest price gets all the points. Okay? They held interviews with both firms, and both firms were given sets of questions. Some of them were repeated questions, some of them were based on their proposals, and they were, we broke them out into categories, and they had to do their presentations answering all those questions. And then we also asked them to provide revised pricing for five years firm instead of three, because initially, we asked for three. And we realized that wasn't necessarily fair to a new vendor coming in, because the incumbent had all of the trucks and the drivers and the carts. So we asked for five years pricing firm, and we asked that of Waste Management too, and that gave them an opportunity to lower their price as well. And this is encouraged in an RFP process, we're in a bid process. Vendors know there's no negotiation, so they do give their very, very best price. So we did want to offer that five years here, and you'll see that in the next slide here. Republic Waste came back, and their pricing, they reduced it $115,000 over the first three years from what they offered. And then they offered an additional two years to make the five years firm. In the next slide. Can you go to the next slide, and then we'll go back to this one in just a minute, Sarah, thank you. Waste Management came back with their pricing, and they reduced the three-year pricing by $56,000, and then gave us five-year pricing, and then advanced to the, no, go, go to the next one, please, Sarah. See, there's the difference you were asking about that, Commissioner Reynolds. Waste Management was $6.1 million more than Republic. And at that point, the committee knew Republic was qualified, but with that price difference is something they really could not ignore. Okay, now you can go back to Sarah, please. Thank you. Patty talked about this earlier. This is the recycling rate structure. It's a flat fee, and this is how Republic works with the city of Kalamazoo for recycle. Instead of charging per residence, they charge a lump sum based on the house count. So when finance worked on the fee structure, you'll see later on, we worked from the $8,001 to $11,000 house count for participation in recycle, because, because that is our goal. It's probably more realistic to get in that range. Of course, we'd like to be higher, but for now, this is where we are. So that's what you saw in, if Sarah, if you can go back to the previous slide. Thank you. Those are the prices you see on the bi-weekly recycling there. Okay, you can go forward, three, I think. Okay, so we wanted to make, the commission, or the committee wanted to make a recommendation at the December 15th meeting for the commission to approve the contract for five years for $16,804,000 for the ordinance as is, and then authorize the city manager to sign the two two-year renewals for a total of up to nine years, you know, provided those, that price is in line, and the city manager would not sign it if they weren't. Okay. And so we understand that this is a, a big contract, it affects everybody. So we have a transition team put together to really do everything we can to make this a smooth process. And Waste Management has pledged to help us with that, and to be a partner in the transition out. And they are willing to work with Republic on that as well. Do you have any questions about the procurement aspects?
I had a quick, quick question. Oh, go ahead. No, Kathy, by all means.
Thank you. I'm curious if any of the conversations were related to how Republic is managing staffing during the pandemic. I know this won't go on forever, but I know that's been an issue with our current vendor. And I'm just curious if you've heard from other communities and how that's going, or from Republic specifically.
Yes, I talked to Muskegon and Holland, and they haven't had any issues. But maybe that could be because of the COVID levels up there. I'm not sure what they are in that county. The Kalamazoo Township Facebook page did have some yard waste delays because of staff off for sickness. I did talk to Jack at Republic, and he said that they do have staff that they can bring in to be drivers. And Republic is here to answer any of your questions, too. If we want to bring them on, Rebecca, we could probably do that.
Sure. Is there anyone from the Republic, from Republic that could answer Commissioner Wilson's question in regards to service implications due to COVID with your current operations? Sarah, you may need to remind them how to unmute stars.
Can you guys hear me? This is Mike.
Yes.
All right. So yeah, I mean, we've had, we've definitely had some folks that have been impacted by COVID. Fortunately, we have a few different hauling companies within, you know, a 45-minute area. So we've been able to flex our workforce across southwest Michigan, and also utilize some, some workforce from Grand Rapids at times. So to the point made earlier around the yard waste, we, you know, we prioritize picking up trash first, and then recycling, and then the yard waste. So we'll staff accordingly moving forward. You know, it's kind of an unknown when this is going to go away completely, but we have a plan in place to address any staffing shortages we might, we might continue to have. Right now, we're, we're very limited. We don't have much in terms of our staff being impacted.
Thank you, Mike. Other questions, maybe that I cannot see, Sarah or Chris, do you see hands up? Commissioner Blood, did you?
Yeah, I just had a question. It was around the first slide that you introduced, Chris, where you had the team go through and read all the proposals. Yeah, right here. Nope, sorry. The committee go through and read all the proposals and offer, I see here you listed cons only, but you have pros versus cons, and these are the cons between each and how they totaled up. Is that correct? Am I reading that? Oh, no, it's not correct. Okay, please correct me.
I'm sorry, I should have spelled it out on your, this is a snapshot of what I look at. It means consensus.
Oh, okay. I was thinking cons, like something's bad.
I can see that. I would have changed that if I had, no, I've been looking at that for 15 years and didn't even think of it.
Okay, thank you. So consensus, got it. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. I appreciate the clarification.
Mike, at Republic, this is Mark Benke. And can you elaborate a little bit more on your plans that you have in place in the event that you have quite a few people that are off sick or unable to work? And will your plan incorporate other vendors that you would bring in? I guess I'm to a point where if we see the continuation of what we've experienced during the past nine months, even with a new vendor, the people aren't too happy about this. And they take the position they're paying for a service that they pay on a timely basis, and then they do not receive consistent service. And I've even had some, most recently, some people say that they have not been picked up for three weeks on yard waste. My wife has informed me today that we didn't even get our garbage picked up today, and I've not experienced that before. So I guess I need to hear from you, Mike. What is your plan? I know that you may have a plan, but let's talk about your plan in the event that we do have problems continuing with your firm after our new contract begins.
Certainly. First and foremost, we're taking, I'm sorry, can you guys hear me? Am I still muted?
You're good.
You're good. Okay, sorry. We're, we're taking abundance of caution internally at our facilities, to the point where we aren't even letting our, our frontline workers into the building. You know, we've, we've reorganized our processes to make sure that we're keeping our team as, as safe as possible. In addition, you know, we have a, a program with Republic where in the event that, that we have significant amount of staffing shortages, we have drivers already identified and are willing to go anywhere in the country at any time to assist if we have a shortage. And most importantly, I'd say right now, we are overstaffing. You know, we are, you know, staffing across all three of our local hauling divisions at a higher level than, than we normally would, you know, under normal business conditions. So I'd say those are the three largest plans that we have in place right now to make sure we're able to service appropriately.
Does your plan involve bringing other contractors that are not Republic in the event that you guys fail? I guess we're to a point where, even though with the crisis, the pandemic that we're in right now, the citizens really aren't accepting the fact that the pandemic is delaying their pickup. It's, it's one of the top complaints that we've received for the past four months.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, fortunately, we haven't had to go down the path, or we've had to reach out to a, a third party to assist. But that would be an, an option that we would absolutely consider and, and make sure it was on the table if needed.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Sophia?
Thank you. I guess I'm, I'm assuming Mayor Benke asked, do you have a plan? Yep, you've got a plan, and you know what they say about plans. So my concern is making sure that there is someone from Republic that Rebecca and her staff have access to, so that when I call her, because I'm getting called because people are upset about their garbage service, that there is someone who's going to be responsible and responsive in getting, in getting answers so that we can help inform the public. Because this has been going on, this was before COVID, that people were calling with issues with their garbage service. And it kind of has fluctuated back and forth. And so I want, my desire would be to have some commitments from Republic that they are, have a plan in place to, to do just that.
Absolutely. We, we will have a field supervisor dedicated to the city of Battle Creek. You know, I'd say 90% of that individual's time will be in the field on a daily basis, ensuring that we are meeting our, our expectations. In addition, Kyle, or who's on the call here, will be the, the division manager. He works out of our Marshall facility. He, he, we've already traded contact information. He'll be available, and, you know, Battle Creek's near and dear to my heart. I will make myself available at the drop of a head, also, given there are concerns from the citizens.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I am next, if there are no other questions.
I think you're good. Go ahead, Carl.
All right. So I'm taking on the fee discussion part of the conversation here. And so you can advance the slide once, Sarah. So this, this activity is, is handled out of our solid waste fund, which is the 596 in the budget that you guys approve, which is an enterprise fund. And the enterprise funds function like a business. So the revenues that are generated cover the expenses of the activities that are in that fund. So when we're trying to figure out what the actual cost of the customer is going to be, we take into consideration a number of different factors. Of course, the contract with the solid waste haulers is the biggest piece of this. But also, we have portions of our utility billing staff and their expenses that we have to account for, portions of our environmental staff, so Patty and Bessie, and their expenses. Some of the operations out of Bryce Pit, so, you know, all the leaves that are generated in the city of Battle Creek end up out of Bryce Pit, and we process those there. A portion of the code compliance staff and their expenses for junk and trash code enforcement. And then also special collections, or, you know, we utilize grants for a lot of our different things, but sometimes we, we have to have matches. And so the hazardous waste, the tires, the styrofoam, the recyclorama, those are activities that are out of the solid waste fund. And then, of course, we've been spending quite a bit of money to gain some compliance in recycling. So all those special communications that we're sending have, have, have to be covered by this fund. Let's go to the next slide. Couple other factors when we talk about rates are, the solid waste contract has always been kind of an odd time. It starts in April, our budget year- Our budget year is in July, so we're going to take this as an opportunity to correct that and get the rate structure and the budget on the same timeline. The positive news in all this is that we enter this contract with a fund balance. So over the last number of years, we've managed to squirrel away over four hundred thousand dollars in, in, in a fund balance account that we have some options on using in trying to mitigate some of the increases that we're going to see going forward. Of course, we have to deal with wages and fringes and the model for the new rate structure is, is I give a lot of credit to Brad Waite in the finance direct finance department. He, he has a model that he utilizes and so he's, he, he looks at the contracted wages and historical fringes and what we anticipate going forward. So there's an annual increase there. Of course, material supply, professional services, internal services, so IT, the city attorney's office, all the internal service funds, so are predicted there. We also have to kind of guess at what kind of participation level we would have in our recycling program. So, you know, we kind of talked with Republic and we talked with other communities and, and you know, the, the fifty percent mark is kind of our goal. And so our conservative estimate for our rate setting was one step above fifty percent. So we'd love to hit that mark. We'd love to hit a hundred percent if we can. But we also need to keep in mind that we want to have good quality recycling moving forward. And then finally, the, the last section while we're setting our rates is, is the number of customers. So you can kind of see our breakdown, the the majority of customers are regular curbside customers. We do have a discounted rate for both backyard and curbside, and those are spelled out in the ordinance for elderly or handicapped individuals. So there's a lot of numbers on this page, but really I'm going to present to you three different options. And it's probably best to kind of focus on that second column or that first and second column of regular curbside. That's where the majority of our customers are. In this scenario, understanding that COVID has impacted a number of people and a cost increase would be tough to to deal with at this time. We, this, this scenario would show the use of that fund balance in the first year. So it would really hold that price to the customer the same as they currently are, are, are having for the next really fifteen months. Beyond that, you're looking at probably a dollar and a quarter increase for the majority of the customers. And we'll come back to these, so don't try to be jotting on numbers. We'll go to scenario two. So scenario two is pretty similar to scenario one and but instead of holding the rates steady for one year, we try to hold them steady for two years and use that fund balance up over the, over those two years. Negative with this scenario is that there's a pretty big substantial increase in that third year. And then moving forward, it's ninety-five, ninety-five cents and a dollar a month. These are monthly charges. And then the last scenario is the use of that fund balance over the life of the five years. And that you can kind of see in our regular curbside fee structure, you're looking at about eighty-five cents increase annually moving forward. So I know there's a lot of numbers on these three slides and I'm sure that there'll be questions. But I want to, I want to kind of motor through that and kind of get to this slide. This is the comparison. So in the process of, of, you know, going through the exercise, we wanted to make sure that what we're doing for the citizens of Battle Creek is providing a discounted waste refuge system and also a system that is sustainable. So these are just cold call to the vendors for how much it would be for a month if you lived outside the city limits. You can see their prices for Republic and Waste Management in Granger. What you, the notes below it are really what are is telling is that it doesn't, these, these prices don't have yard waste. They don't have vault. The cart sizes are all varied. Granger, nor Republic do offer recycling in some of these prices and some delivery fees for the, the carts are included or are not included in these prices. And then something else that's kind of interesting, the city of Marshall is actually taking up the same exact issue at their Monday night meeting. And they are considering a proposal from Granger. Their, their proposal does not include yard waste and it does not include bulk. And you can see their prices for the next five years that they're considering. But they also have a point seven five mil for annual trash, leap and brush collection, and that's something that the city of Battle Creek does not have. So when you're comparing prices, sometimes you have to know the details behind them, too. So with that, we can open up for questions.
Do we have any questions of the staff at this time? I can lead off, Chris or Carl. The disparity in the bottom lines between Waste Management and Republic is about five thousand dollars a day. Do you think that Waste Management just wanted to walk away from this or do we have a responsive bid from Republic or have, have you seen a bid this far apart ever before?
I haven't. I wouldn't want to comment on anybody's intentions, but Republic's bid was, it was very good. It was very thorough. I, I don't think they could have improved upon it.
I know that Republic has bid, at least five years ago, they bid on this contract and they may have bid previously. Did you look at that information just to compare?
No, I didn't go back, but you know, in my record, since I've been here, they've been the two bidders on every bid that I've done. And it seems like they've always been kind of close, but it's always been higher. But yeah, that would be interesting to go back and look at those. I don't recall that quite that difference like that.
Okay, my last question is, who's going to pay for the new containers or dumpsters or where does that come into play or did I miss that?
That's, that's included. Well, for the recycle, that's included. For the carts, you know, it's the same as it is now with Waste Management. If you want to rent it, you can rent it or you can provide your own cart.
Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. I appreciate, Carl, that you included the prices for folks that are not working with inside of a municipality. I think that's really helpful and I think that that's something that people often overlook. I know we used to live out in the country and we had to pay for every little thing that we threw out. And it added up to way more than I'm paying inside city limits. I wondered, are you're going to send this presentation to all of us, right? Okay.
Yes, I'll make sure.
Try to memorize all those numbers. Thank you. And then I'm wondering, I have a question for Republic. I just wondered about their customer service interface. I know now for Waste Management, people can report issues in a number of ways besides just calling us and having us pass it on. So if someone does have a problem, what's the best way for them to contact Republic? And how easy is that process?
Star six to unmute.
I'm sorry, Diesel Pete's, I couldn't hit the button. This is Jack Brown. So we have call centers in three locations across the country, Indy, North Carolina and Phoenix. And the benefit to that for us and, and our customers is it gives us expanded timeframes. So as Indy closes at six o'clock for phone calls and, and stuff that comes through, those calls then will roll over to the Phoenix Call Center to be picked up through nine PM, our eastern standard time. So it's what we do is, as we set up the city of Battle Creek, we build a, what we call a mapping program within our call center. So anybody that calls in from that area will automatically pin into the map. And then in within that map will be a document that houses all the information associated with the city of Battle Creek contract as far as what customers need to do to set up service, what questions they may have. If there is a, you know, if they're calling in for a broken container, those, that information is immediately entered into our system and comes back to Kyle and his team for next day recovery and replacement for those, those containers.
Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome.
Jack, that was a great segue into my next question, broken containers. So I know with Waste Management, I have now had two broken containers. And they have the guy who picks it up, throws it in the back and then chucks my garbage can across the yard and sometimes snaps it. So are your trucks man based in the back where people are picking up? Is it truck based where the mechanical arm goes out and picks it up? What is, what does that look like and how might that affect, you know, some of that pickup?
Kristen, that's a great question. So we would love to see everybody in the city of Battle Creek in the future to have trash carts through us and that's the only cart they have because then we could go to an automated system. And I think through the bid process, working with Chris and Rebecca and the team, that was one of our tier two quotes was to go to an automated system. But to do that, we got to have everybody utilizing the same can. So for now, what we are, what you will see with our trucks is they will have a a container on the front of them that will allow us to dump. If we ever get to the point where the city decides that that tier one program that we presented makes sense as we work through it and, and stuff, then we can automate that truck with an arm that reaches out and it helps, it helps for saving those containers. It helps for safety of our drivers, the whole shebang. But for right now, we will be dumping them into a front load off the side of our trucks, but the capacity is there down the road to add an arm if, if we get to that point.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Oh, you're welcome.
I don't see any other hands, Rebecca.
Thank you, Mayor. We have nothing else in our presentation. I just want the commission to know that I will get this PowerPoint out to you so that you have the information to review. And then as Chris mentioned, it was mentioned a couple of times in the presentation, then we'll be preparing a resolution for the commission's consideration of a contract with Republic Waste at their, at your December fifteenth city commission meeting. So just kind of wanted to tell you where we are in the timeframe. And then answer any other questions you may have if we missed anything.
Rebecca, can I ask a quick question? Carl had, had shown three different options. When we pass this resolution, is that then your decision to make with that committee or is that something the commission is helping to decide on?
Carl, you want to go ahead?
Well, really, it's a commission decision, I think. You know, they, having that fund balance gives us some options to prevent, present these as scenarios. At the end of the, at the end of the five years, the way that the model is set up will be made whole. So we have to hit a certain revenue forecast. And whether we hit that at year one or year two is really not that important. What we need to hit it at year five. So, you know, you're setting, we will likely take a, the contract for five years and a rate structure for, for the similar timeframe.
Thank you.
But certainly if the commissioners, you know, if you have some comments you'd like to make around any of the three scenarios, please let us know because if we get a general consensus, we can certainly utilize that in the preparation of the resolution. You know, I think I appreciate that that staff is very mindful about understanding the impacts of COVID and that we still don't know, you know, the full implications as, you know, as time advances. So the use of fund balance in, in some way in all of those scenarios, I think, is prudent, especially because we still have some unknowns there.
Rebecca, if you could ask for an update in your weekly update on the consensus building, I think that would give us the direction that we need and then maybe report back to us before that meeting.
I will do so. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Are there any other commission comments? And I'm not seeing everyone. So if you do have a comment, just go ahead and, and talk. I only see twelve people. There we go. All right, I'm not having any other commission comments. So I want to thank our vendor. I want to thank Rebecca and her staff. This was very educational and it's timely. And now the big decision will be made here in December fifteenth, I think, right? Thank you. This adjourns the meeting, our, our workshop. Carla, do you have a question?
Nope.
I think she's just waving goodbye.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.